Welcome, and I hear it's raining or hailing outside? I don't know. Anyway, we are meeting for our final school board meeting until August. Our next meeting will be August 6th. And so this will be our last meeting, and I'm calling this meeting to session. It's June 3rd, 2019, and all board members are present except for Dave Donnelly, who is excused.
He may be joining us on the phone.
Okay, might be joining us on the phone, we'll see. And this is our student rep's last meeting with us, and so I just want to take this opportunity to thank her. I thanked her a little early, I think her last board meeting. I didn't realize she was going to be here, but I wanted to thank her. And would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And are you ready to read the opening statement?
Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our board meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District in this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of the meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. At this time, the approval of the agenda, or is there any dissension or changes? Seeing no changes. We'll vote on the approval of the agenda. I'm going to have to vote if there's no changes or dissension. So, agenda stands as approved. Military report, I understand our military, the Colonel, is out sick, so we will be missing him this evening. Do we have a report on maybe who our new student rep will be next year?
No, not yet.
Okay, all right. So it'll be a surprise, and we'll look forward to it next school year. Okay, thank you. Committee reports, compliance. Did you guys meet?
Compliance.
Oh, governance, sorry.
That's the last school board meeting.
It's a new committee.
We've not yet met. We have a tentative meeting for 5:30 next Monday. I don't know how long Member Donnelly is going to be out of town. It's kind of scheduled for his convenience.
I have that in my office.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll know tomorrow morning, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Communications, is there anything?
We have not met either. I plan to follow Mr. Holloman's meeting.
You might want to get in front of it, it might be a long way.
That's true. I'll go before him.
And I was hoping, Ms. Mitchell, you could report a little bit on our ad hoc committee for strategic planning, because that has changed.
So, we did have a meeting to talk about process, and I think where we're at right now, we're going to be discussing it more at the board retreat. But the process that we were talking about is having the strategic planning to take the Destination 2020 and move it forward with a new five-year plan is to have it be a committee of the whole, have the entire board be involved with that. And we certainly want to engage within the ASD and beyond the ASD walls, students and community members and businesses in the process. And so we're going to be fleshing that out a little bit, and we're going to be using the Council of Great City Schools most likely to guide us in that. And that will really kick into action probably in September, October. I think we were talking about maybe October, really having the bulk of our engagement with the, with the community. So, yeah, I think that's kind of where we're at.
Excuse me, I just wanted to add that as we went back and looked at the roles or what we needed to do, I realized that the Dr. Bishop and her team are going to be working on a timeline for us. But also, as a board members, we need to be looking at those groups that we want to reach out to, and maybe start sending those in so that we can get them on our timeline and get those individuals, not individuals, but organizations on our slate of who we'd like to include in getting community involvement.
Yeah, and I guess I should add, Katie has graciously agreed to be the point person for all of that. So, as you have ideas, please send them to her, and she'll keep it all in one place, because she's much more likely to do that than I.
And I think, right now, we're looking at not every high school, but maybe sections, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. Different areas of town, and certainly the timeline isn't really to put the board on a schedule, rather, it was really, the President asked for some guidance to steer clear of community meetings that would interfere with major school events or major neighborhood events that we know of. So we will use this fall to really look at our district-wide calendars, talk with our principals in the buildings who really know their communities and what's going on, and then provide data, information at the retreat, that would allow the board to then set its schedule. So that's really the primary reason for the timeline.
Thank you. We always appreciate your help and your staff's. So at this time, we have a finance committee, sorry, we just had that today.
Finance committee had a very spirited meeting today. We talked about our 2019-2020 audit plan, our end-of-year fund balance, tagged equipment, crowdfunding, and the last two, the tagged equipment and crowdfunding, probably have new board policies to be considered in August, which is when our next meeting will be, August 6th at 2:30.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to our earthquake update.
Thank you, Madam President. At the prior finance committee report, we did a brief update on the earthquake, and we were meeting with FEMA at the time they were present in our state. I have asked George Vakalis, who is working, I think earlier today, he was called the godfather of the earthquake and FEMA understanding, as well as our chief of operations, Tom Roth. They're going to give an update requested by the board. That will be a little bit more in detail, more than simply the finances for the whole board. Thank you.
So, through the President, thank you, Dr. Bishop. And also, I'd just like to thank the board for your kind comments and sentiments to Team Earthquake. And I would just say, you know, having, having, you know, had the fortune to work with that group here for the last six months on this earthquake recovery, you know, it really is a humble honor to work with such a team of professionals. So, our purpose this evening is, is really to provide information and to answer questions. We're going to provide you a snapshot, really, of where we stand in terms of the recovery from the 30 November 7.1 earthquake. Some of this will be kind of a, kind of a, kind of a, again, a snapshot, high level. We are prepared to drill down into any topic that the board wants to get into, in any, any degree of specificity. In addition to Mr. Vakalis, I also have some, some integral members to the team that have, that have really kind of, kind of planned this along, and have been the, the impetus behind the deliberate tracking of the requirements that we have for the district in terms of our recovery. So as, as an agenda, what I'm really going to do is, first, I'll talk to costs, both incurred and costs that we are anticipating in terms of rough order of magnitude numbers. I'll talk briefly about where we stand in, in some of our contracting statuses. Just of note, we are under contract for design for Eagle River. We're just about there with Greening. So those two schools are probably the most timely, based on, based on the need to recover those schools for, for those two programs. We'll talk briefly about insurance, and then, and then lastly, between myself and Mr. Vakalis, we'll talk a little bit about the FEMA process and where we stand with both the State of Alaska DHS and with FEMA. So, really quick, by way of background, you know, some of this I know folks are cognizant of. So, you know, after the earthquake, we did our initial rapid visual assessment, and, and, you know, went through the immediate response process in about the first 10 days following the earthquake. And, and I think, all things considered, given the magnitude, that, that was really a good news story, with the exception of those two schools that I referenced. All of the schools were put back into operation. There were 15 schools that kind of stood out in terms of either the numbers of deficiencies resulting from the earthquake, or just the cost, the estimated cost for, for repair and recovery, that the district, with the approval of the board, we did contract with, with local architectural and engineering firms to do a more detailed assessment of those buildings, engineer assessment, and we, we received a project analysis report for each one of those. And I'll talk a little bit, too, that the numbers that those generated. And then, for the last couple of months, in addition to this continuing assessment of, of the deficiencies and planning for recovery, we've been in this concurrent series of meetings and negotiations, collaborations, and inspections with the State of Alaska DHS and with FEMA. So, just a couple of very quick comments, observations, if you will, before getting into some of the numbers. So, I think this recovery, quite frankly, from the district perspective, is probably going to take about four to five years. If, if you think in terms of just the identification of the needs, and then just the procurement of funding over time, and then the time it takes to go through the design, and then the actual repairs and construction itself, so about four or five years. That this is a, this, that the earthquake damages is additive to, to the, the other deferred maintenance requirements that were existing prior to the earthquake. So what that really translates to us, as we come forward to the board here in the next couple of years, when we are requesting bond propositions to go forward to the public, that it will be inclusive, both of that existing maintenance that existed prior to the earthquake, as well as recovery. So, I, I think it very likely that the 2020 bond proposal that will, will come forward to the board in the fall will most likely be earthquake recovery-centric. That's just my prediction, as we work that through the superintendent. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the FEMA piece and the state piece, in terms of what we will be looking for, in terms of recovery of costs to the district. And then, lastly, we'll talk a little bit about FEMA grants, and some things that we think we can do that will make us better in terms of the seismic resilience of the district, really at no cost. So with that said, I'll pause. Are there any, any questions, comments at this point? So what I'd like to do is-
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious, because one of the things with the 2019 bonds, we have the language in there that we can use those for earthquake repairs if needed. Are we going to be using those bonds for all earthquake?
So, so, to, to the board president, if I might, it's probably too early to, to make that determination. You're right, within, within the language of bond council, it does give the district, the board, the authority to use all that money to go towards earthquake recovery. I think what we, we have to balance, though, is there, there is some expectation amongst the public that unless we have to, we should use that money towards the projects that were listed in that bond proposition. So you have that as an option. And, and as we talk through the numbers, what, what I would propose that we do, there, there are two different primary sources. The first, for capital repair. The first being that we could, again, look at the 2020 bond specifically for recovery of damage to the district from the earthquake. We also have some former bond authorization, some fairly significant amounts can also contribute quite a bit to that effort as well, and still be able to do the projects on the 2019 bond, if, for some reason, I'm, I'm a cup glass, or a glass half-full person. I think the 2020 bond will pass. But if it didn't, then I think that's really where the board would be at a decision point, whether to take that 2019 authorization and use it to recovery. The thing that we have to our advantage now is, we're, we're going into the design process. So most of what the district will need to spend here in the next 20, 12 to 18 months will be for design, not for actual construction, which are the bigger costs that we would incur.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, thank, thank you for that question.
Yeah, Mr. Donnelly is on the phone with us. Do you have a question, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, thank you. Tom, FEMA has a special accelerated reimbursement rate for Americans with disabilities at pathways within buildings that they're compensating school districts for. Are we doing anything to capture that higher rate of reimbursement for those kinds of ADA areas?
So, through, through the board president to Member Donnelly, I'm going to ask Mr. Vakalis, who's been working directly with FEMA, to respond to that question.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, yes, we do have all the information, and there are certain requirements that we have to meet in order for, to be eligible. But each one of the construction projects that we're looking at, we're also weighing what those requirements are to make it viable for that type of grant. In some cases, it may apply, in a lot, a lot of cases, it may not. And there's a checklist that we have to go by to see if, in fact, it will be reimbursable. But that is being looked at, yes.
Mr. Donnelly, any other questions?
He dropped off the line.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, what, what I, what I propose to do now is, I'm, I'm going to present several, several numbers to, to the board, and I'll spend a little time talking to those. Each board member should have in front of you a matrix, and the, the title of the, the chart of the matrix is PAR schools, and then parentheses, as of 31 May 2019. So, so right now, the district, and as of 31 May, we are about 8.3 million spent from the earthquake. Now, of that 8.3 million, to, to talk a bit about the recovery of funds, so FEMA has multiple categories. The first two categories, A and B, are, are specific to debris removal, which is category A, and the second is for emergency response, a reaction to the incident. Within those two categories, we, we assess, at least initially, that we believe of that 8.3 million, 7.4 million is recoverable through category A and category B. So, the, the other numbers that, that we are, these are current rough order of magnitude numbers. So, we assess at this point that to just repair the earthquake damage throughout the district, that that total estimated cost is 48.05 million. So as you'll see on, on that chart, you'll, you'll note the 15 schools that we did the PAR, and, and I'll very briefly talk through the chart. So, if you look to the far left side, the school is listed, in no, no specific order other than, you know, we put Eagle River and Greening up at the top. You'll see a column for FEMA. That, if you see a Y, that means that FEMA has gone through that school and has taken a, a, and has conducted an inspection with the district and the State of Alaska. All the schools are going to have an inspection done. So, to very quickly talk to that, initially, they were going through every room, every, every hallway in the, the district, of every school in the district. So it quickly became apparent that the amount of detail that the team had done to prepare for the FEMA inspections was so thorough and deliberate that they've allowed to transition to a spot check. So we're in the process right now of spot checking the remaining schools in the district. So this week, as an example, we're going to get into East High School and Fire Lake Elementary School. So you'll see that that status will change over time. And then you'll see four, four columns as you move from left to right. So the first column is the earthquake-related repairs. That, again, is specific to what it would cost to repair the school damage. Now, this amount does not include, you see down at the bottom, it's a 42.05 million. That is just for the 15 PAR schools. But maintenance is also doing work in the other schools in the district. Their assessment for those costs range between 4.7 and 6 million. So the 48 is a cumulative amount of the 42 plus the 6. Now, as you move further to the right in the matrix, you'll see the, the earthquake-related damage repair, plus seismic improvements to the buildings to bring them up to a level that we, we call it, it's the industry term, damage control. And the, the intent here, if the investment were made, would be to raise the seismic resilience of the buildings. Again, these buildings, you know, they had performance issues. But it would raise the performance of the structure, so in a, in the event of another earthquake of, of like magnitude or greater, that these buildings would survive the event better. And that, that amount, right now, stands at 117.03 million. So you see there's a fairly significant cost increase in order to raise the seismic improvement of the buildings. And I, I think as we kind of go forward, that when, when we come to the board later with recommendations on specific projects to repair the damage, but also, in, in some of these, some of these schools, it really is kind of an imperative that we would increase the seismic resilience of the structure. In some cases, though, I wouldn't really call it arbitrary, but I think the, the risks are less in some schools and in others, that there may be a decision that would be presented to the superintendent and then the board. So I'll pause and, and answer any questions at this time.
Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you so much. I'm just curious, you know, in the first column, you talked about how much it would be when you add in the other schools. Have you looked at that second column, when you include, include the seismic improvements? I mean, I imagine it would go up quite a bit if you looked at all of our-
Through, through, through the President to, to Member Mitchell. The, the short answer is, we, we have, in some limited circumstance, not to the degree, I mean, we have not put structural engineers into those other schools to really look hard at them, but the, the, the inspections that were conducted, I mean, some, some schools, other than furniture and items being tossed off shelves, exhibited very limited damage. In fact, the estimates are 10,000 to 15,000 to repair compared to some of the other schools that are in the millions.
Ms. Vakalis.
Just so I can understand the, the spreadsheet, you've got the earthquake-related damage repairs, and it has the timeline. So just taking Eagle River Elementary as an example, it says 16 months. And then, one more column over, and it has plus the damage control improvements in 24 months. Is that cumulative, or is that 40 months?
No, that's through, through the President, good question. That is not a cumulative number. So, I'm sorry. So at 24 months is the projected total time that it would take to complete the design process and then do the construction.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
So, yeah, just to follow up to my other question. So the, the schools that weren't seriously damaged, obviously earthquakes are each different. Is the thinking that they are, the seismic integrity is higher for those schools regardless of how different the next earthquake might be? Do you know? I mean, that's more of a structural engineering question, I guess.
So through, through the President, to, to Member Mitchell, I, I guess I'm reluctant to, to make a, a comment on, on an assumption. One of the recommendations, we, we talked a little bit about the, about the federal grants, you know, we want to do a tier-one seismic inspection of every single school in the building. So we know that. So we, we, we know with, with some degree of certainty, because engineers will, will conduct these, these tier-one evaluations where we have vulnerabilities. So that's a mitigation measure. You're right, every earthquake is different, and it shakes buildings in a different way. I mean, but these ones, the ones we're talking about seem to survive pretty well.
So I have a question. One of my concerns has been that Greening has needed a lot of maintenance. There's, there's a lot of deficiencies there. And I know one of the things we talked about with this is maybe putting additional funds, if we could, towards this, so that we can address some of those items that were already on that list. Have we taken a look at that? Does this include any of that?
To the President, yes, we have. And if I might, I mean, it's, it's quite the school. So, so, we, when we spoke to the board a couple of months ago, we, we did propose, and the board did approve, although it's not funded yet, we, we understand that, that we would seek a, a roof replacement for Greening, but also increase the seismic resilience of the building. And, and the amount was about 24.1 million, is a rough order magnitude. So, in, in discussion with the, the project manager, Ms. Jansen, Tom Benisov, Edie Grant, and the, the McCool, the, the MGS-
McCool-Carson-Green.
That team, that architect. We actually, we have walked the ground with them and talked in detail about Greening, and what we need to do to make that school better. And, and the goal is, if 24 million is the amount that the board approves and we get funded, we know we're going to spend, we, we know what we have to do. But if there is residual money from that construction, we're going to have some, some alternative additions to the scope of work. So things like light, it's a terrible ingredient. The parking, the traffic flow is terrible in Greening. All these different problems, ventilation is bad. We're going to fix it. And that's, that's our intent, but we realize we have constraints. But, but, yeah, we are, we are leaning forward to fix that school.
Ms. Hildy.
And just to follow up, I remember Mara said, if there was something that, and was also going to kind of enhance the appearance, I think the board would appreciate hearing those opportunities while you're going through the construction. I would like it, when it's done, to look really shiny and like a, just a really great place.
And if I might comment through the President, I think everybody in the team wants that wow factor. When that staff and those students go back to that school, just wow.
We've put that school off for a long time, and I'd like to see them get something more than just earthquake repairs. They need it.
Just a question on the chart, Mr. Roth.
Yes, ma'am.
So, schools like Chugak Elementary, Chugak High, they have amounts, but they don't have timeframes?
Yes, ma'am, through the President. So, the schools that do not have the time... I'm going to bring Mr. Benesef forward. If you can talk to that, Tom.
Yeah, so through the President, the schools that don't have times, they didn't sit, I mean, they're totally operational now. They don't have any problems with it. So, repairs could happen over time. It's not really a time factor to do those repairs. Part of the reason why we picked those 15 schools to begin with, to do the PARs, is because we identified each one with structural damage to it that needed to be addressed and looked at immediately. Some of them had parts of the school that were offline for further investigation. So, that's why you don't see the times on those.
So, the cost is not expected to increase over time?
For the schools...
For the ones, the items that don't have a timeframe. So, if it takes, if it takes longer, the cost could go up? Or are you anticipating the cost, as you estimated here, to be the same?
They're all a rough order of magnitude cost estimates. So, we expect them to stay right around they are, unless, there's always hidden conditions.
Right. And there's always a time factor, an inflation issue. I think the industry standard generally is about 3% per year, in terms of inflation of cost. But as Tom mentioned, these are, they're rough order of magnitude numbers, they're based primarily off of formulas that we receive from DED. And those numbers get much closer to true cost when you get into the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Also, so, when we're doing our cost estimates, and we're predicting when we're actually going to do construction of it, escalation is included in that...
In that, okay.
...cost estimate.
Okay. Any other board questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Much appreciated. At this time, the next thing on our agenda is public testimony. The Board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment, as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the Board asks that there is no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all the information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to administration for follow-up. And at this time, I have Zach Fields and Ryan Andrew, if you'd come forward. And Zach, you can begin when you see the clock to your left here.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Zach Fields, I work with Labor's Local 341, previously worked as the state's Workforce Development Coordinator on apprenticeship. So, I worked for three and a half years directly on apprenticeship programs, and wanted to come and speak to you about the previous work session today on apprenticeship utilization requirements, and specifically to set the record straight about some false assertions that you heard from staff. I'm very aware that staff, the procurement staff, don't support apprenticeship utilization policies, never have. It's their prerogative to have an opinion, but I think at the point that the Board has adopted a policy, it's also their prerogative to carry out that policy. So, let me just address some of the assertions they made, which really get to the core of costs and administrative issues. Staff says, "No one else does this in terms of requirements regarding apprenticeship utilization." That's not accurate. There are multiple local and state governments that do require apprenticeship utilization. Municipality of Anchorage recently adopted an apprenticeship utilization requirement as part of a much broader community workforce agreement policy. There are local governments in the Pacific Northwest, including in the Seattle and Portland regions, that require apprenticeship utilization. I've visited those communities in my previous job and talked with the people who are responsible for implementing those apprenticeship utilization requirements. So, it's not like you're trotting new ground here. Those requirements have been in place for years. We know they work, and I helped write the state's apprenticeship plan that the staff referenced, and there is zero evidence apprenticeship utilization increases costs. To the contrary, apprentices are paid less than journey workers because, on the premise that they're also less productive, and that their wages should correspond to their level of productivity. So, again, zero evidence that apprenticeship costs more. Staff asserted, "We would have to independently do compliance on apprenticeship utilization on apprenticeship programs," and who, and what is a registered apprenticeship program. Again, that's not accurate. U.S. Department of Labor oversees registered apprenticeship programs, and the U.S. Department of Labor, based right here in Anchorage, has a list of registered apprenticeship programs. If programs are on that list, by definition, they are compliant with federal apprenticeship guidelines. I know that when I worked for the state, the U.S. Department of Labor staff regularly sent us currently registered programs, they can send currently registered apprentices, and as a public procurement agency, all you have to do is ask for that information. Staff asserted, "There is no list of apprenticeships." Covered that. More costs. Again, all the costs that you heard about were predicated on these previous false assumptions that I've just rebutted. So, I would hope that, instead of taking quick action to eliminate a policy, which was developed thoughtfully and in accordance with public comment, that the Board would make sure that has all the facts before helping the staff repeal a policy that the staff just happened not to like. I would note in closing, King Career Center has long partnered with apprenticeship sponsors to put graduating students into apprenticeship programs. So, when you have apprenticeship utilization policies, you are supporting some students who want to go on to good careers. And I would also reference, apprenticeship has broad spread, or broad public support, including from the current and former presidential administrations, and from many state administrations, and that political support should help give you some comfort that you're adopting policies that are well tried and have a long record of success. Thank you.
You can begin, Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the members of the school board this evening for allowing me to speak. My name is Ryan Andrew. I am in the electrical construction business and have been so in the industry for about 14 years now. In my role prior to a business rep for the IBW Local 1547, I was a classroom instructor at our apprenticeship program. So, I'm very familiar with apprenticeship in general, the federal programs that are registered and approved by the Department of Labor. I'm also very familiar with, in my current role, the process of requesting information about those programs. So, the Freedom of Information Act, and filling out those requests. The information is that the administration, that anyone would need to measure apprenticeship utilization, is easily attained with these forms and turning those in. You know, I'll kind of just follow up on a little bit of what Zach had to say about some of the other areas of the country, that, you know, this is not, this is not new policy. There are other agencies, government agencies, that have adopted similar policies. The city of Portland has a 20% apprenticeship requirement, not a suggestion or a goal. And then, Snohomish County in Washington also has a 15% apprenticeship requirement. So, there are other government agencies out there, and, you know, in the states. Zach also mentioned earlier the municipality of Anchorage and their recent CWA, Community Workforce Agreement ordinance, that also has 15% apprenticeship utilization. You know, so, at the end of the day, it's not, it's not something that's new, it's not something that is onerous to administer and implement. I think with a better understanding of the process, the apprenticeship programs and the industry as a whole, which I hope that some future meetings will lead to that better understanding, I think that that can do some good and maybe, you know, change a few minds along the way. So, just in closing, I, you know, would like to urge the Board, please, not to postpone this policy just because of those things that you had heard earlier today, and give it some thought. You know, with this upcoming construction, we heard about several projects, you know, during the work session earlier, that are going to be happening this summer. And I'd like you to, you know, urge you to think about the apprenticeship opportunities that will be there if we have a policy in place, and working toward implementation on those construction projects coming up. And think about those opportunities for those young folks in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Do we have anyone else that would like to testify at this time? Yes, please come forward. You could state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is...
Yeah, do it in the mic, so she can...
My name is Valerie Prince. Hi. I would just like to talk about the Greening, I'm sorry, the Greening school rebuild and the concerns that I have. And especially when I heard this evening, that we are already planning to ask the taxpayers for more money in 2020. This is a huge concern to me. It's like, every time we turn around, is we want more, we want more. Yet, we're building a building that we don't need. What we need is a trade school, if we need anything, out here in Chugak and Peters Creek. And I can tell you that a lot of the community members are concerned and dismayed about that this is going through. We think the school is on unstable ground to begin with, and too much money is going to have to go into it to give us a school that we don't really need. And many of us feel that we have enough room at Chugak High School to have one high school, give Greening Eagle River High, and move forward like that. Spend some money to make necessary improvements at Chugak High School, so that we can have one great high school. We would have enough teachers to begin offering more cult courses, AP courses, all the things that we're missing in those schools right now, because our attendance is low, meaning FTE is down. Everything doesn't make sense to us, and we don't understand why we're moving forward to rebuild a building that's just been a problem for a long, long time. And there's concerns also, that unless we go in and really address the foundation that it's sitting on, the land it's sitting on, is that building ever really going to be safe to put children and employees back into? I just feel like we need to go back to the community, which is Chugak, Peters Creek, Eagle River, and really ask them what they want. This is a lot of money that we're talking about spending, and I can't even see what you guys have on the paper there. But we're talking millions and millions of dollars, and then saying, "We're going to ask again in 2020?" Please, I can't take anymore. It's a lot, just all my taxes. And to know that we have nothing else, other than property owners paying for this. Please consider this. Take a look, step back. We can do things differently. Give us something that we really need, which would be a trade school, not something that just rebuilds a problem. And that's really all I'm asking you guys for. And I'd really love to see what's on that piece of paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify at this time? Okay, oh, yes. State your name, please.
Marnie Hartel, Vice President of Programs for AEA. I just wanted to speak on behalf of AEA and thank our Superintendent, Dr. Bishop, for your message to our staff, letting us know about the current funding situation and being very transparent. I know that we're all concerned about our attrition retention, making sure we retain and recruit great educators, and I think that that just is a testament to that. So, thank you so much for your communication with our educators and our staff, district-wide.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move forward, and next, we have the superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few items this evening, but I did want to share that on our hot topics under earthquake, information about building costs can be found by our public. So, the sheet in front of you had some data on it, but we will continue to update through hot topics to be able to see the estimated cost, as well as what has been expended already for each of the schools. So, with that, that's accessible by everyone. There was a request for a safety update, and I regret, the board member who had requested it was Member Donnelly, so he's on the phone with us, and we can share the PowerPoint as well. But we wanted to update the Board in regard to the safety, security projects that we have going on. If you can recall, we began after the Stoneman Douglas shooting. We had an ad hoc committee for safety to discuss our policies, our actions, what we're going to do, what do our, not only capital, but what are our behaviors in regard to safety as well. And from that ad hoc committee came a list of particulars for investment into our future. And with that, leading that on the capital side was Tom Roth, leading that on the behavioral side was Mike Graham. With us today are Ashley Lally, who is in charge of our safety and security on the building side and the actions of security. And to Tom's right, your left, is Diane Lemon, who works with our counselors, and is also the lead on our mental health first aid and other programs for which we're implementing in the district. So, Mr. Roth, I'm going to turn it over to you. We have quite the update, but if we could get this emailed, certainly to Mr. Donnelly. I'm not sure if he has access to it, but we'll get it to him as well. Thank you. You may take over.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the Board President. Dr. Bishop covered it all. I'm going to pass off to these two. So, but we'll start with Diane, who's going to talk about the BJA Stop Violence Grant that the district received several months back, and then we'll transition to Ms. Lally, who'll talk more about the capital, safety, and security improvements through the district.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. So, there's been quite a few benchmarks that have come through this year. First of all, I wanted to find a little bit, the STOP School Violence Grant, what that actually means. STOP stands for Student Teachers and Officers Preventing School Violence. This is a national program of which we received the grant. And as the grant stipulates, this isn't just for the administrators in our schools, this isn't just for the adults, but this is for the students as well. So, there are several initiatives that moved forward this year that were tied very closely to this grant. The first one, as you see on the slide, is we implemented our Student Safety Assessment Protocol. This is basically a threat assessment protocol. We began training administrators for this back last summer, and throughout this year, we have trained administrators, counselors, psychologists, security members, nurses, and just last week, our SROs. So, they are all familiar what this protocol is. Moving forward, we're going to be doing specific teamwork on this and bringing in some national trainers to help this work move forward. Also, part of this work is our youth mental health first aid. This is a training, an all-day training that focuses on, what the title says, is recognizing when students are in a crisis and those first aid steps that can be done by adults around them, and how to address those concerns. So, we had already some instructors in the district for youth mental health first aid. This year, we were able to partner with the state of Alaska and train 10 new additional instructors, and then those instructors went ahead and trained 530 staff. This is going to continue on. Next year, we'll continue training staff, and at the end of next year, we will revisit and see if we need to continue on a third year after that. And then, the third piece of this was a question-pursued Refer Suicide Prevention Awareness Program. This is also sort of a first aid step measure, looking and recognizing when someone is in... crisis and contemplating suicide. And what this is, is they train gatekeepers to recognize those signs and help that person find help and, and recognize hope in their lives. So as that went forward, you see the numbers there, we trained over 13,000 secondary staff as gatekeepers. And while the student portion this year was not specifically pushed out, we still did train over 1,500 high school students as gatekeepers as well. And next year, the push will be to train more secondary students as gatekeepers through this, through this initiative.
Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you so much. This is a wonderful endeavor. So you trained high school students. Is that the age at which you do peer mentors or is it also done at the middle school level? Or, because obviously younger kids are also at risk, right?
Absolutely, through the president too, Ms. Mitchell. We will be doing mostly secondary. The program is developmentally appropriate for 12 and up, so our focus will be on secondary. But yes, that is, the hope is to move into the middle schools as well.
And then I had a question. When we're training ASD instructors on this mental health first aid, and we say we've got 537 staff trained, who are those individuals? Are they teachers? Are they, I mean, who are we training?
The majority are certificated staff members, but if there, our classrooms are capped at 20 participants. So if there's still room, we open it to anyone in this school. But the focus right now are those certificated staff members.
I, I, I think it's a great program. I think based on our funding, it's one way to do this. But what I've heard from staff too is that sometimes you're providing this mental health and if it's a teacher, they can't exactly provide it at the time that the student needs it because they may have 35 in their classroom. So what is our contingency in, in that case? I mean, I, I like the idea that we're training people to recognize this, but I don't think this replaces our counselors.
Absolutely, nor is it meant to replace counselors. This isn't meant to be an intervention. We're not trying to make teachers counselors. They're not going to be counseling students, but just recognizing when a student may need additional help and helping refer in those and doing that, what we call a warm handoff to those who can actually help them.
Madam President, it's a great question. And what we've learned from past tragedies is that there were many warning signs that a counselor wouldn't have known, that it took the referral of someone else, whether it's a student or another staff member, to recognize something that wasn't right before the child could get help. So we are working these same ends with our youth trauma, really creating an army, if you will, of, of soldiers in our schools to really support children in not only the academic side of the house, but in the behavioral, social, emotional side of the house as well. That's best practice. But again, it isn't to fix anyone, it isn't to be counselors. It is strictly to say, "You know what? I noticed something different because I see this student every day at 10:00 and today I noticed he or she walking in and looked a little differently, maybe melancholy or sullen or excited, you know, something." So it takes really all of us to have those eyes out there and that's, that's a purpose. But that's a great question because we would never want anyone to think that this is a replacement. This is strictly for us all to be aware of the social, emotional indicators of, of our students as well as perhaps even other staff members.
No, thank you. Ms. Hildy.
Thank you. I'm just curious on what you've seen as far as assessing the effectiveness of this training. Do you see an increase in referrals to counselors or to nurses based on what you've seen? I would expect after the training, you would see an increase in referrals.
There hasn't been tracking as referrals specifically, but we have, we do have an evaluation at the end of the training where the participants evaluate how beneficial they found the training. And of all those who went through it this year, it's over 95% positive ratings that we received on how they felt the training would help them in their work.
Ms. Sa.
Ms. Sa.
I know I have to call you Margot or Ms. Margot.
I think this is wonderful because, on many levels. Partly because even as busy as teachers and our staff get every day, the more we can empower them to be able to, you know, help kids and report, see and report, I think it's great. How, my question has to do more with how do you choose your, who gets the training? Is it just voluntary or is there a...
For which one?
For all of them.
For all of them. So for the student safety assessment, there are specific team members, which best practice and national research dictates who should get that training and then they lead it in their school. And that's usually administrator, a mental health worker, a nurse, and security or SRO. So that's who we are focusing on now. For the youth mental health first aid, it's everybody, you know, who, as many as we can get through, any adult. I mean, these trains go through in the community. Yep, it's, it's good for everybody. And the QPR is also for anybody. Anybody can be a gatekeeper.
So then at this point in time, all of our schools don't have staff trained in this? In all of, in any or all of these areas?
In, in the QPR, most of our schools, including many of our alternative schools, have received training in this.
Alternative?
As well, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I apologize in advance because you will be hearing the most from me and that hefty agenda that you saw. But we really did want to give you a holistic approach about what we've been working on and what we will continue to be working on. So with that being said, the first one is surveillance cameras. Right now, we are looking at changing our camera vendor. There's many reasons for that, one of them being that we anticipate being able to save millions of dollars every three to five years. So we're really just looking for a cheaper vendor and there's a lot more out there now with new technology that's come about. In the meantime, because that is a, a very long approach to change over all the schools, my department has started to keep an inventory of cameras on hand so we can do an immediate replacement when there's a failure. This is something that wasn't done before and we have already replaced over 50 failed cameras this year. We are continuing to build that inventory so we can just do replacements as quickly as possible. APD now has access to our camera servers and they can view our footage real time at dispatch. And you're all familiar with this, but the board approved $385,000 for a new camera system at Chugiak High School, which is very needed and they're excited to receive that. And that project will be completed this fall. Okay, yep. Next one is keyless entry. And this was another big takeaway from the security panel. Really what we're trying to do is just move away from brass keys. Those are just inherently not as secure. They get lost, they get stolen. And then whoever finds those has access to our schools. So we've been working on that. So far, we have seven schools that are transitioned to keyless entry. Four more will be done this summer and early fall. Maintenance has put $200,000 in their budget for next year to continue that transition and we should get 12 more schools in keyless entry for next year. And one big difference with the keys is right now how the key process works is the principal gets keys to their building every year and then they sign out the keys to their staff. How a FOB will work is that it's assigned to you. And the access that you have has to do with your job title. And as you move, or if you move throughout schools, it will change as well. Also, if it's lost or stolen, we can deactivate it right away. So just a lot more secure. With that, there's new key and FOB procedural documents that have been created and will be implemented this fall. My department is doing a full key inventory of all the schools and their keys this summer to kind of start with a freshly in the fall. And as you are aware too, you guys approved $90,000 for keyless entry for Chugiak High School. They will be the first secondary level school to have keyless entry, along with South, which will be done this summer as well. So it's a little bit of a new experience for high schools to go kind of to this more secure level. But we met with the principals. We have new procedures in place for how that will look. And we anticipate as high schools roll out, they will just follow that procedure as well. Secure vestibules, again, the board approved $12.6 million for this project. 12 elementary schools will receive this secure vestibule upgrades. How those school, those 12 schools were selected was based on a score that my department put together, which took into consideration their current front office design, population of the school, crime around the area, and any special populations to consider. That gave us a weighted score and then CPNC made their priority list based on that. They are slated to complete the design phase by the end of this summer and they are currently working to hire a security engineer who will be trained in crime prevention through environmental design, which hasn't been done before, but it's definitely a good thing to bring on board. One other note for our secure vestibules, we'll be working to find a visitor management system that we will make a district standard. So every school you walk into will have the same visitor management system. And we're also looking to get it here at the Ed Center. And we're just barely in vendor talks with that now, so we're not quite sure yet what that will look like. But it will be the standard across the district. And of course, keyless entry will be included in these secure vestibule projects as well. And then the next two slides are just visuals. This is Ternigan Elementary. Every school is going to look slightly different based on, you know, the current setup, but the, the main idea is the same. And that is that someone is buzzed in from outside the school. They are automatically routed directly into the main office opposed to into the school. Well, they will do the visitor management check-in and then they, they gain access through the school, through that main office. So that's generally what it will look like, you know, pending small differences based on the school. Next slide is pictures of Ternigan Elementary, which, which right now is kind of the, the current standard that we have. It's the best one out there in terms of if you want to see a secure vestibule and how it all works. Radios, this is just to share with you guys kind of our redundancy in communication. So every school has, they're called Kenwood handheld radios that they use for both daily communication and in emergencies. And what we found going out to schools is that they really depend on these radios a lot. So what we decided to do was build an inventory of radios to loan out to schools in the event that there is an intercom failure. So if the school's not able to, you know, make an all call, we will go, they will sign out for our radios. And once the intercom is back up, we will take those radios back. We've also created an inventory for one-for-one replacements, but only up until they get down to that, those numbers at the bottom. So beyond that number, schools will be responsible for purchasing their own. Alarm code changeover. This is just for the alarm panels. So if you access a school outside of hours and the alarm panel, the alarm code is set, you have a code to deactivate that so that guardian security doesn't show up. Essentially, these just, these haven't been changed in over a decade, so we'll be doing that this summer. Education and term contractors, their codes will be changed annually. So kind of what we see right now is a lot of codes are just used by anyone. There's a lot of codes that people know all across the district and they know that they work. So just to make that process more secure, we'll be changing those annually. Maintenance, CPNC, and any district-wide codes will change every two years. And then down at the bottom there is just kind of how, how it's going to work for the schools themselves. Quick update on APD SRO program. Actually, this week, all 16 of the SROs are in what's called NASRO, the National Association of School Resource Officer Training. And that's really a great program. It's pretty all-inclusive. They do everything from active shooter response to their version of capturing kids' hearts. So all of our SROs are at that training this week. As Ms. Lemon mentioned, they did the Stop School Violence Grant training last week. And our new memorandum of agreement is with the APD Muni lawyer for review right now. We anticipate having that signed here very shortly. So that will hopefully be a new three-year contract with them. This is just a quick update on our Alice contract. The current contract does not expire until 14 August 2021. We owe no more monies until that contract is up. But beyond that, if we want to stay with Alice, there's just some numbers for you. The annual cost to renew is $25,000 and that gives us 6,000 licenses for video training for all the staff to become certified in Alice. And then any additional training we want to do, you'll see there, it's $14,000 for two-day train the trainer. So every school has staff that are trained to then train their staff. And that's what we'll be doing this year. Every school trainer will be training their staff and that's separate than the drills that they do with the students. And the Alice recommendation for face-to-face training is every three years. We are not mandated to do the face-to-face training. It's just good for the trainers to get reacquainted with that. The next two slides will be about pilot programs. So Alertis is a mass notification system that we piloted at the four AK school deaf and hard of hearing. The big takeaway for this one is that they utilize a mobile app and that was really the, the most attractive part of this, this pilot program. They also do pop up on computer monitors and marquees that they loaned to us for the pilot. Those drills you see there, all the schools conducted at least three of those drills. Some of the schools conducted all five. And initial feedback from AKSD staff is very positive because both the deaf staff and the hearing staff felt like they were better able to make quicker decisions for their classrooms. A lot of times before, you either had to have a hearing staff in the classroom or someone from another classroom had to come over and tell you what was going on. So now they get it right on their phone at the same time that everyone else does. The good thing about, about this program is that it's a pretty minimal cost. So we paid the $9,500 for, just to do the pilot at those four schools. If we eventually wanted to get all of our staff, it would cost the same amount of money. So that $9,500 is for unlimited users. We could potentially spread this out to the entire district at the same cost. Audio enhancement, this you guys will actually be voting on tonight. So this isn't totally set in stone yet based on your decision. But this came about because we were trying to find a new intercom solution. The one that we currently have, we found to be pretty cost prohibitive. I think it was close to half a million dollars to do one high school. So we started to look at other vendors and audio enhancement was attractive because not only do we get the intercom communications with them, but we get classroom audio enhancement. So there's four speakers in the classroom, teacher wears a microphone. And all the studies show that there's better classroom performance because every student can hear at the same level, not just the kids at the front of the class. In addition, they have a safe notification, which is just a button that the, that's on the teacher's microphone. So if there's an issue in the class, they press that button. And at the monitor in the front office, that classroom pops up as red and alerts the staff that there's an issue in that classroom. And then they can immediately respond to it. So if the budget transfer gets approved, then we will be piloting this program at Cassoon Elementary and Eagle River High School. We chose both of those schools because they are on the most aged intercom system. We actually can't get parts for the intercom system anymore at those schools, so that's a good thing. And then Cassoon Elementary is a SBBS school, so we figure we might get some good utilization out of the signal alert there so we can really test the whole program. Just an update on safety and security training. This is for safety and security staff at the secondary schools. And this is just an idea of what this next school year will look like in terms of training for them. We sat down with them to see what kind of training they were interested in receiving and this is what we got back. None of these are set in stone yet, but most likely this will be the, the training for next calendar year.
And Madam, I add it's prior to school. We're not training preschools.
And lastly, drill guidance. This is not necessarily changing which drills we do, it's just providing more clear guidance in how we conduct the drills. And really, the biggest thing will be for the Alice drills. And we actually started it the second half of this year where secondary schools were required to email my department with when they would be conducting their Alice drills. And we went out and audited them. Audit's not really the right word, but it's really just to get more eyes on to their drills and provide feedback for how it went and how they can approve, improve. And then you'll see there at that first point, we're just trying to, again, create more guidance for how they conduct the drill. So the first Alice drill will be a full evacuation to their rally point and to their secondary location if it's feasible. The second Alice drill will be a full barricade of the classrooms. And then the third and the fourth will be scenario-based. So we'll give them a list of scenarios to choose from and they will conduct those two based on the scenarios. And then the other notes there, just trying to make it more real-time. So simulating shutting off the gas valve during a drop cover hold-on, as we saw, actually having to do it this year. And then lastly, every school and program will participate, will participate in the Great Alaska Shakeout, which this year will be on 17 October.
And Madam President, I do want to add that there was, over the years, there's been, drills were just drills. And oh my goodness, why I have to do it. And, and one of the comments that especially secondary shared was during some of these drills, they did practice turning off water valves and electricity valves. And initially, the Great Alaska Shakeout had about 29 schools signed up because it was voluntary. And, and even prior to the earthquake, we said, "No, we'll all participate, every school, sign every school up because it's a statewide venture." every school up because it's a statewide venture. And some of the feedback from our principals was just, you know, you don't need it till you need it. And they were very thankful for, for just days earlier in every scenario reviewing, what if you're in a room without tables? What do you do? You turn away from the glass. You turn away from windows. And certainly, we understand how that has paid off. And, you know, we, recently in our country, we, we had another mass shooting. And no matter how much we prepare, you know, we, we can't foresee things happening. We're doing our, our work on prevention. But the drills that we, we do have, our administrators, as well as many educators have come back and, and really thanked, thanked us and really thanked the security team for, you know, what used to be an annoyance is now appreciative of a skill to, to have. Because it is spur-of-the-moment decision-making that both students and staff do during this time. Thank you.
And no guns, right?
No.
Did you still have a question, Ms. Hildy? Any other board members?
Oh, you mean for the whole thing?
Yeah. Yep, that's, that was the last slide.
Can APD see all of our cameras now, or some of them still analog?
Yeah, only the IP-based cameras.
So what percentage of our cameras is that?
I'd have to get back to you on that. We're definitely over 50% IP, but...
Do substitute teachers, will they get the key fobs? And it will be key to...
Yep. So how it's going to work for new employees is as they in-process through HR, they will actually receive their fob. It works a little bit different for when we're transitioning a whole school. My department will actually pre-program those fobs and then go out to the school and have the teachers sign for them.
On the secure vestibule, is there a second buzz after you get into the office so that the office is secure?
So that's actually part of the decision-making that's going on in the design phase right now. We don't have a decision on that yet. Either, the thing is there, there's going to need to be access to the main office for staff. So if they come in off hours, they can access the alarm panel because most of those are in the main office. So whether or not that's going to be key access or fob access hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks. Okay. Any other board questions or comments? Great report. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Mr. Donley, are you on the phone?
Yeah, I'm having, I had some communication difficulties, but I was looking up...
You're back. Okay.
Yeah. I was wondering when there's going to be another ad hoc committee meeting to address developments since the last one.
Sure. That's a great question, through the President to Member Donley. When I had spoke last time, when you asked about the next meeting, I knew that our team meets monthly, but it is a district team. And we haven't had an ad hoc. They're presently working on the items that were presented to us prior, and we haven't implemented them yet. So at this time, there is, is not a meeting. However, you can contact and get in contact with Tom Roth, and they can, you know, share information about their monthly meetings to stay on top of the issues, both, like I said, behaviorally, as well as building-wide capital security.
Any other questions, Mr. Donley?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. Very informative.
Thank you, and just a terrific team to, to work with. I want to say that. Quite thorough. Next item on the superintendent's report is a very quick celebration, and wanted to share a short video with the board to update you. Board President was there for the celebration, as well as, I believe, prior to graduation, that Member Mitchell was there. And we were celebrated by the Department of Ed at the federal level. They sent a representative, do really recognize this program. And some of the neat things that are coming about, and again, the teacher that you see before you, she, there's a company that our Director Locke works with that is flashcards. And if you've ever seen just vocabulary flashcards, they have a picture on one side, they might have the word on the other, and what, and then the spelling of the word. And so flashcards are normal, you know, we, we've used them. And we have them for Spanish, you've seen them if you're learning another language. Well, this teacher worked with the company to create the first Yupik cards for the Yupik language. And the words are actually scanned in on a QR code. So she not only has the spelling, but she has her voice recorded indefinitely. So this isn't, and this is a big deal, and I share that with our Executive Director of Indian Ed. This is such a big deal that we are putting into the record electronic data of the Yupik language in over 500 words already. And so this program doesn't only benefit our children in our district, this is a language saver, we believe, for our state and one of our indigenous languages. So this is one of the first full immersion programs for indigenous language. And let's see this. Where is Doreen Brown here? She can give a big wave and a big bow over there for receiving the grant with Mr. Locke as well. So with that, we have a, just a two-minute video to share. They're having their computers read the QR codes.
Anchorage School District is not new to language immersion programs. In fact, our first program began back in 1989 with Japanese at Sand Lake Elementary. Since that time, programs have been added in Spanish, Russian, German, and Mandarin-Chinese. However, in a state with over 20 official indigenous languages, having an Alaska Native Language Immersion Program has been long overdue, until now. In the fall of 2018, College Gate Elementary opened its doors to the Anchorage School District's first Alaska Native Language Immersion Program, welcoming close to 30 kindergarteners who would soon be learning both English and in Yupik. Dr. Martha Bicalow, Professor of Second Language Education at the University of Minnesota, had this to say about the program.
I am so thoroughly impressed with Anchorage Public Schools for taking the bold move to create an immersion program in Yupik, a Native Alaskan language. They're joining a worldwide initiative to revitalize indigenous languages. And I think it's very apropos that 2019 is the International Year of Indigenous Languages, and this is the culmination of the first kindergarten that has gone through the first urban indigenous language immersion program in the U.S. that we know of. I think that Anchorage School District is launching this program in the very best way possible. They have chosen a program model that is what we call a 50-50 model, where the children are half-day in only Yupik and then half-day in English. And this guarantees their language development in Yupik as, as well as English, their language and literacy development, as well as all of the content areas that they need to learn. And this Yupik program really is part of a bigger global initiative that is very grassroots, but also very international in terms of the spirit of revitalizing, supporting, and nurturing indigenous languages.
And that was a good story for ASD. Thank you, Board, for supporting that. And finally, this is just a kind of a little surprise. We'd like Mike Graham to come forward. He's celebrating his last board meeting of his career. So Mike, and I ask our administrators to come forward and those in the audience, as well as our team. I just wanted to share, Mike, come forward, front and center. 32 years with the Anchorage School District, and he actually shared a little story. So maybe you can share that. His, his work with Anchorage didn't actually start with, he shared this with me the other day, didn't actually start with his teaching career 32 years ago. Mr. Graham, can you explain your first job to the Board in ASD?
Sure. My first job, I spent a couple summers working with the maintenance crew of facilities. I was part of the paint crew. They had, they had summer hires, I was a summer hire. So yeah, spent, working, the first, the first year was still where Stellar High School is right now. That was where the maintenance department was. And before they moved out to the, what was then the Vacated Principal Brewery, which is now...
We don't share that out loud. So, thank you. And I was just, I just want to say I've been honored to work with Mike over my three years. He is a wealth of knowledge, truly, a true professional, cares about the people around him, cares about children immensely. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks.
And we do have others here who showed up, just... Yes. And Billy has something for you as well. And Board, this is Billy Strickland, the Executive Director of ASA, if you're not familiar. If you ever need a, a good parking pass to a state event, this is going to be.
It's an honor to be here for Mike's last board meeting. Prior to me being in this position, Mike and I, when he was the Region Four ASAA Board member, I was the Region One, so I got to stuff him in a small plane one time and fly him out to Mothluck, where we toured the village while we were in Bethel. I'd like to read this, if I may. Mr. Mike Graham, congratulations. At a recent board meeting, the Board of Directors of the Alaska School Activities Association unanimously voted to award you an honorary ASAA Gold Lifetime Pass. This pass will grant you and a guest complimentary admission to all ASAA sanctioned high school intersclassical activities from the local through state tournament levels. The Board has selected you to receive this recognition because of your longtime exemplary service to the students and citizens of Alaska as a, I believe, coach, official probably, advisor, and mentor. We hope that you will use this enclosed pass with pride. What I'll tell you, since it does allow you a guest, that if you bring your wife, you have to take her out to a really nice dinner that you have to pay for first. Okay? Thank you seriously for all your service.
Billy told me he was here in case, because it might be a question about esports.
So I'm going to run real quick in case they're at...
Well, Mike, I just want to say from the Board, and I think I speak for all of us, that you will truly be missed. She cries, I cry. But, you know, I know you're not going to have occasion to wear your ties too often, but, you know, put them there and just think of us when you pull them out for whatever occasion. And wow, I'm going to miss your smile, I'm going to miss all your help. I know the Board is just not going to be the same without coming into the office and seeing you. And I think Margo wanted to say something.
Wow. So years ago, when I went to Windler, Mike was there, but then he shortly left. Now I'm here and he's leaving. But it's not just about Mike and my friendship with him over the years, but it's, it's just a fantastic family. Mr. Graham was my mentor, his dad was my mentor, his mom was the school nurse at Windler, and Mike was a great teacher and, and a great administrator. So I thank you. This is just the beginning of another chapter, but I do note that when I come, you leave.
I first met Mr. Graham when he was, and I say Mr. Graham, actually one of the Assistant Principals when I was attending high school. And to, to then come back, kind of full circle for me, when I moved back to Alaska and Mike gave me my first teaching opportunity. And then right after that, gave me my first opportunity as an administrator. And I am forever grateful for the lessons that you've taught me and the inspiration that you've given me, from being a student to being a teacher to being an administrator. Mike, I'm really going to miss not just your smiling face, but your genuine nature and words of advice always and support.
So, Mike, I invited a few of my, my high school friends, because at one time, we were all in the ranks together as high school APs and principals. And you've been a fixture in secondary for a long time and in our district for a long time. And I know your experience and your, your wisdom and general nature about things, it's going to be greatly missed. So thank you for everything you've done for the district, but also to mentor principals and people like me who were growing in the ranks. So thank you very much.
And Madam President, that concludes our, the superintendent report. And you can't leave till the board meeting's over.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 170 personnel report, March 18, 2019, regular session minutes, April 1, 2019, work session minutes, and April 15, 2019, work session and executive session minutes.
Second.
Board members, please vote.
And that passes seven years. So at this time, I'm going to read before we start our agenda items. An agenda item is first introduced by the Vice President, is seconded by another board member, will open the floor for public testimony. And if you have signed up in advance or indicate you're interested in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote, before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen to the left.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 176. The school board approved rejoining the Coalition for Education Equity of Alaska.
Second.
And, well, there's Marnie. Is there any public testimony on memorandum 176? Okay, seen none. Is there any board discussion? Okay, Mr. or Ms. Hildy?
Thanks. I appreciated getting to talk about this in the work session just a bit more clearly today. I am concerned on the cost of it, not just the $34,000 a year cost, but she mentioned if there's litigation, which is, I think, part of their plan, is that we would be asked to contribute to that litigation expense. And I was looking at the Moore case that had been mentioned, and, you know, it was filed in 2004, it didn't even get to Judge Gleason's decision until June 2007. That's, litigation is expensive and time-consuming, and I'm very hesitant to commit ourselves to pursuing or, or supporting that. It, I, I, I don't think it's the direction we need to be going. And that's what I kind of heard when we were talking and reading their website information. It seems anybody who wants to work in education advocacy, that's good, right? Like, we need all hands on deck. But I think if we're using public money, we just need to be very careful on how we're spending, you know, that $34,000 is public dollars.
Mr. Hallman?
Yes, I'm going to support this, and for a number of reasons. And certainly, cost is a, is a factor and a concern. But I, I think that our, we need to work to strengthen our connections to other districts. Quite often, if Anchorage won't participate in things like this, they have a hard time getting off the ground or having any real traction. have a hard time getting off the ground or having any real traction. There's a reality that, to some degree, almost all students in Alaska are Anchorage School District students, or a very high percentage of them will be over the course of their 12 years if they're in the state. They may not live here right now, but they wind up living here for a year or two or five. And a lot of them go back and forth. So I think they support education in Alaska in a very general way. And as the leading district in the state, I think it's important that we be part of that.
And Ms. Holloman.
Yes, as I stated earlier in the work session, I just think it's very important that we are part of the networking, the educational advocacy and networking in our state. And, you know, I just, it's not about, the money is important, don't get me wrong. And I absolutely understand that. And what I heard today is that regarding the litigation, that we might be asked to do that. It wasn't that, I didn't hear required. And so we can say no if we can't afford it. But I think to connect ourselves and network on behalf of public education in Alaska for Alaskan children, I don't know how we can excuse ourselves from that. I really don't.
Ms. Fekales.
So I've taken the time to kind of just work my way through the process and look at the different organizations that we're a part of with Council of Great City Schools and the Alaska Association of School Boards. And then we also get the Alaska Education Update from Ms. Shanna, who really gives the timely updates. And so I guess one of the things that I'm looking at is currently, the Coalition has thirteen school districts, of which we would by far be three to one. You know, our 46,000 students, they'd have about 13,000 in cumulative. They have four corporations that are also listed as members. If you include our 32,000, we would be 20% of their funding. But I don't know where we would get 20% of that value out of it. I don't know, that's one of the things I, besides the legal aspect that Board Member Hildy, you know, brought up, I'm having a hard time understanding what we get for that investment that we don't already get from an organization like AASB, who is one of their members. And so everybody's networking, everybody's kind of working together, and everybody's sharing some of the same platforms. I went online and I took a look at what their priorities are, you know, the Coalition's priorities. And they are the same, you know, as AASBs. And so I worry about redundancy when we're spending, you know, this kind of money. And so that does concern me because we are, we are all fighting for the same thing. And I get that. But I don't know how much money we keep putting out there to support the same things. The same issue I have with AASB, I also, you know, have with this one, probably, you know, a little bit more. We will always struggle with our urban and rural divide in this state. And I struggle with how these groups can represent us and what we need in our structure and still advocate for what, you know, the different funding mechanisms and, you know, school needs, you know, building needs, stuff like that, when they're just, they're funded so differently. And so how would we get that representation that we need based on what our needs, you know, really are, when things are, they're just not the same. And so I, I'm glad that they exist. You know, I'm glad for all of these groups that come out and, you know, fight for, you know, education for all children. But I do worry about the cost when it seems, you know, it's such a similar path as AASBs. And so that's kind of where I am right now, just struggling with this one.
Any other board members? Ms. Mitchell?
I appreciate everybody's point of view on this. I will be supporting rejoining because I do agree with Member Holloman about, I do see, I think that, you know, good legislation supports every student in the state. And I do think that we see many, many students through Anchorage. So I think it's important to support the entire state. And so I think that we'll get direct benefit. And I think that we also will get indirect benefit when other districts are supported as well.
Any other board comments? Okay. All right. I think everyone knows where I stand on this. I brought it forward. Oh, sorry. Oh, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you. This particular organization is so specifically oriented towards rural school interests that it has some very serious conflicts with the interests of the Anchorage taxpayers. And while we want to support education statewide, those organizations do not necessarily, in fact, they do not support the interests of Anchorage taxpayers to the point of some extraordinary unfairness. And they have no intention of making those, correcting those unfairnesses. So while we also participate in the Alaska Association of School Boards, which also has some very unfair positions against Anchorage taxpayers, this will simply make the problem worse. And I really do think that our participation through the Alaska Association of School Boards is more than adequate to network, because all the other major, larger urban districts, we belong to that organization, even though they were badly discriminated against as far as their voting power. And within the Alaska Association of School Boards, that's something that I think we really need to correct. So I do think there's some inherent conflicts here that make it very unwise for us to be paying for the position of an organization that overwhelmingly takes positions contrary to the interests of our constituents and our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Any other board comments? All right. We will proceed to vote. Student representative vote.
Yes.
Board members, please vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 172, transfers of funds for various instructional and support items in the amount of $2,712,756 is listed below. Additionally, the administration recommends that Anchorage School Board approve and authorize the superintendent to allocate 3.25 million from the 2017 bond project balances to earthquake repair projects.
Second.
Do we have any public testimony? Okay. Any board discussion? Ms. Fekales.
I just want to say kudos to all of the purchasing, planning, and construction department that, you know, was able to save 3.2 million dollars that we can, you know, now put towards other projects and stuff like that. And so just want to just say thank you.
Ditto. Any other board discussion? Okay, student rep, vote please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that passes unanimously with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 167, and authorize the award of contract to the Chariot Group Incorporated for installation of projectors and televisions at various Anchorage School District locations. For the base rate, three-year contract in the amount not to exceed $900,000, with two one-year option periods at $300,000 each for year four and five, in the amount not to exceed $600,000. Upon appropriation of funds, the total contract value not to exceed 1.5 million. Individual purchase orders not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Any public testimony on memorandum 167? Any board discussion? No board discussion. If we have a student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that memorandum passes with six yeas and one nae.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 165, and modify the student nutrition, heating, lighting, refrigeration system replacement and equipment upgrades to include access control, security system, and DDC upgrades within the allocated budget.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on 165? Hearing that, is there any board discussion? No board discussion? Oh, yes.
Does this, like, have to do anything? We had the presentation from the student nutrition people, and they're talking about sort of their, like, new vision, trying to change the lunch style. Will this affect that at all?
All right. Any other board comments? Okay, student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that passes with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 174, and authorize the superintendent to purchase insurance as outlined in this memorandum.
Second.
Any public testimony on memorandum 174? Any board discussion? Student vote?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. Okay, well, that brings us to non-action items. Is there any non-action items that, oh, sorry, we probably wouldn't know that. And it passes with seven yeas. I'm trying to get you out of here, Mike. So that brings us to non-action items. Does anyone want to pull any non-action items for discussion? Okay. Then we're on to new business. And I do have a letter to read from reopening negotiations with Teamsters Local 959 for food service. This is their notification to the board to open negotiations. It is the intent of the Anchorage School District's Labor Relations Office and Teamsters Local 959 to reopen bargaining to negotiate Article 7.01 Health Insurance of the Current Collective Bargaining Agreement pursuant to the Teamsters' request under the negotiated contract language in Article 7.016, which states, "The parties agree that either side may open 7.01 health insurance for the year 2019-2020 year for the sole purpose of moving from the district's plan to another health insurance plan." So the board has been given notification. And at this time, is there any new business? Okay. Any public testimony? All right. Any comments from board members, communications, administration? Yes, Emily.
I just wanted to say thanks, because this is my last meeting. It's been an interesting year, and to say the least, but it's been really insightful for me to see sort of what goes on behind the scenes to make everything happen in our schools. And it's an incredible job that you all do. So thank you very much. And I hope to continue working with you guys next year. I'm going to be serving as the Student Advisory Board President, so.
And would you want to do it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
I might be back at LUC.
Well, I just want to, yeah, I just want to say that it's been, you're a quite remarkable woman. I applaud your bravery and your courage to speak up when you felt the need to do so. And I think that says a lot about your character. And thank you for being a part of us for this school year. Any other board comments? Yes, Ms. Hildy.
I just want to share a book I read that I thought you guys would all like. I remember maybe a little over two years ago, Board Member Marsett sharing a video on grit. You remember the TED Talk on grit, Dana Duckworth? Well, she has a book that she goes into, you know, the book's better than the movie, right? So I just want to encourage you, as we get to our board retreat, we're going to start looking at where we're going, not only this year, but post-destination 2020. We're going to be talking about what makes effective school board members. And the book talks about how do we identify excellence. Certainly, there's not, just grit isn't the only answer, right? You could be an evil doer with grit. There's a lot of components to excellence. But in identifying the steps you make and your goal setting and your perseverance and how those little steps. So, you know, I recommend the book. But just as we start to reflect on our board retreat and thinking about what we're individually going to do to improve the efficacy of this board and education as a whole in our, in our community. So it's a good book. It'll be back at LUC in a couple days.
And if you will give those details to Katie, she can order one of those books up there in my library. Okay. Any other, Ms. Mitchell?
So I just wanted to, you know, going to the graduations, I really appreciated Dr. Bishop's commentary about the launching kids into the world and all the work that has gone into those students. And then Michelle Brown had a letter to the editor today talking about the student who was the lone graduate in his village, I think was a male student, and all of the stories about the community coming together there. And I was thinking about the Yupik celebration here in this room and watching the littlest children do the dance and sing in Yupik. It was just heartwarming. And it just, you know, seeing our little ones here, being so immersed and so engaged and having so much fun and being so loved and nurtured. And then, you know, we all shook so many hands on the stages for graduations. And it's just been a really remarkable past few weeks. And I really appreciate everybody in the district and the amazing job that everybody does in nurturing our children. And it does take a village. And we have a village. And we're working toward connecting people more, which is great. And I just really appreciated that.
I did want to thank Dr. Bishop also for putting that letter out to staff on the budget and finance with what's going on with the legislative. I think it was important to update our staff and just kind of let them know that, you know, we're watching things and we are thinking about them in everything that we do. And so thank you again for doing that. And I believe she sent something out to all the board members. So you guys all have that, too. Okay? All right. Well, if there's no other comments, Mike, quit smiling over there. When's your last day?
Mr. Don.
Oh, Mr. Donnelly.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I had the wonderful opportunity to observe the raising of the Star Spangled Banner over Fort McHenry in Baltimore this morning. It was a very emotional experience, truly amazing. And it just brought back my interest in continuing to make sure that all students in the Anchorage School District are, receive instruction and education regarding the National Anthem and the Star Spangled Banner. And remembering that in the final surveys that were conducted on this issue, before it was voted on by the board whether or not to have the National Anthem played once a week in our schools, that there were some of the music teachers indicated that they do not teach the National Anthem in music classes. And that was one of the fallbacks that was argued, that as long as we were teaching it in music class, it wasn't necessary to play it on a regular basis in the schools. And I would like to, in the committee process, since it was referred back to committee, but hasn't been brought up yet in committee, to examine some mandatory requirements that the National Anthem is taught by all our music teachers, because that was one of the justifications for not playing it in schools. And also examine, maybe going back and saying if one week was too frequent, because one of the arguments was made that if you play it too frequently, it will lose its meaning. Maybe going and attempting to just play it once a month in our school because of its amazing importance to this country and its unifying effect for America. And it really was quite dramatic and emotional this morning at Fort McHenry. And I really don't want to let this issue just die without making sure that at least all our students are getting instruction in the National Anthem.
I think that Mr. Holloman has that on the agenda soon so that we can tackle that. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. So, Mike, when's your last day?
So my last work day is June 28, and my last board meeting is June 3.
Well, I'm going to be there June 28 to make sure you get out the door okay.
Thank you.
We adjourn.